In the organisation, almost as if they are journalists telling me where you've been, what you did, did you see what you did? And it's 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 bridged that divide of gender. It is just an inspirational person to to follow and to see how one person can have such an influence and such a a positive influence throughout our province. So those that you may not know, and apologies, M E C, if you do not like this this picture, but one thing that stood out for me when I saw this um picture, when the team was was looking for introductions of our honourable M E C, who's also the Chairperson of Business in K Z N, she surrounds herself with women and she makes it look natural. Where M E C, she always has a good representation of people around her, diverse people around her as she's going um in um along doing her day-to-day leadership duties. And on top of that, she's passionate about um about I C T in the province. I remember being honoured um being um in in a in a session last year at Gravel where she was inspiring women of all walks of life to enter this industry, whether they are entrepreneurs or employees, um whether they're startups or they are organisation, part of organisations that are already running. She was just talking about the importance of I C T and whenever you see her, she's always talking about various aspects of I C T and what digitisation does to the growth and the sustainability of our province. And um without further ado and saying that, um we'd like to thank you for joining us and I will hand over to you um as you then address us um this morning. Thank you very much, M E C.
Thank you very much, um um, Aleni, uh for those kind words, um indeed, I am uh very honoured to be um joining you um on this very important day um of this uh beautiful launch that you're having um as Vodacom, um what an exciting and inspirational um, you know, um initiative from Vodacom. I do wish to acknowledge um precious um Gula um as well as your other deputies um uh from Vodacom uh in your Women Network forum. Um indeed, I do wish to also acknowledge um the Vodacom um executives as well as the Women Network Forum from Vodacom and all other colleagues um that are joining us um virtually. Um I hope I'm audible. Uh am I audible?
Yes, you're audible and we can see you.
Thank you very much. Um I do also, um I see it's staying on my turn off my camera. Okay, I can't set off my camera. Is it on or off? It is on.
It's on, we can see you.
All right, thank you. But on my side, it's not showing. That's fine. Um I I just want to say good morning, um um ladies and um first and foremost, I do I I I again want to ex- express my appreciation um um to you for the invitation. Um and um and since assuming um this position, I've really have received um invaluable support uh from you, my sister and my colleague um um Aleni and um the Vodacom and all of the sisters and ladies out there um who've been um a a pillar of support um through um the journey um and um the leadership role that we have to assume uh in working with our communities. And uh and you are correct, um during the um the I C T Women in Dialogue held uh in August um last year, um I expressed our intention um to use um the Wi-Fi operated um CCTV cameras um to fight the gender-based violence. And uh Vodacom was the first company to commit to partner with us in that digital uh infrastructure. And many uh people will recall that on the third of December last year, uh we launched um the campaign um against gender-based violence and Vodacom again was part of that launch and even joined us as we visited various areas and you'd know that as well. Um Etinanda, the president um also visited that area. Um it was cited as one of the areas in the whole country that had the highest number of gender-based violence um cases um that were reported in the country. And um our plan was then to try and see what is it that we could do um in order um to assist um in that particular area using technology. And you were there um to support us um in that. And we targeted that area, uh working with our Moses Kotani Institute um uh of Technology and the South African Police Service. Um and uh we um showed that a culture of alcoholism in Etinanda was a contributing factor um to the gender-based violence um and and the abuse of women and children in that area. Um I can tell you now that um ten liquor outlets uh in Etinanda at Amateque um were fitted with the Memeza um cameras and we also installed the alarm systems there. Um and and at the press of a button and using a remote control and a text um can be sent to the S A P S and um they can ensure a speedy intervention during the times of distress uh of many women um in those communities. And uh a number of people have subscribed, um which um includes um the extensive training that we had to do with the police um in that particular area. And um we've also singled out um the system using the face recognition technology and the bi-metrics to identify the criminals. Um and and those were um uh many um such initiatives that um we spoke about. I remember we also spoke about um having um smart um, you know, um houses as women. Um because um these are some of the issues and when um um since Precious was talking about um um that um issues of Women Network and are how um um the lean and 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 uh learning cycle uh women um, you know, um platforms. Um I'm thinking about um such platforms because it is those platforms where in many instances, uh women um do need um that voice, um you know, to speak out, to have that coffee, for somebody to say, yes, I am listening, for somebody to say, I hear you, I share your pain, you are safe with me. Um and um we, I remember as well that um when we 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 discussed the issues of gender-based violence, at the time, we had not even experienced um the 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 COVID nineteen. And now we have we have, we are now experiencing the COVID nineteen and we've had um a number um of trauma um in the number of uh numbers of women uh who have suffered and who have lost their lives um in the hands uh of men. Um and we've seen how the gender-based violence um is really eroding our communities, is really um affecting um our women um uh in our communities. And it is my belief that um through technology, um there's a lot that we can do. But also in terms of um creating job opportunities and making sure that women um can sustain their livelihood, can create their own businesses, small and big businesses, as we are involved in that sector, there is a lot um that we can do. Um it is our view as well in the department that as we reconstruct um the community, uh I mean the the um the economy, we would like to see women in the forefront um of that economic reconstruction. Because it is um uh women uh who can make things happen, but also it is when women um take charge of their livelihood, um that um you would uh dispel that myth um that is there, that uh you see many women saying, you know, I can't do anything, I have to stay in this relationship because what will I do with my kids when I have to leave this man? Um how will I survive if I have to leave um this house? Where will I stay? And and it's 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 many instances like those that women suffer um in those quiet uh houses. And we've seen as well uh one thing that I have also been noticing uh in my in my line of work, um that with the COVID nineteen as well, um just the remote uh working environment itself has been another challenge um to 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 women. Uh because the remote working uh means that um I I hear um uh Precious saying that she is a mother and I I and I love that when when I introduced myself as well, that I'm a mother. Um that um, you know, when you're working remotely, um uh the kids don't understand that you're working and you've got to now uh juggle between um uh working and um understanding the environment of the workplace and also being able um to be professional uh in your work uh environment. And it's 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 times like these and forums like these when we as women need to share and and honour each other um our achievement and learn um in those cycles uh and join in um together really that can empower us. Um and throughout the year, not only um during the difficult times or during the month of August or during the sixteen days of activism but throughout the years and throughout the times um that we need to give support to one another and that we need to um to learn to listen to one another. I I also um want to share, um Aleni, that one of the um um uh experience that um I've also been, you know, observing um is how our young women uh need uh more support than ever before. Uh you know, um our young women um suffer, you know, quietly um in the hands of 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 our male counterparts. You know, when when people were talking about um, you know, the gender-based violence, uh we sometimes only uh think about uh Omamabe to Emma Kaya or um uh how women get abused um by their partners. And we sometimes uh don't think about the young women um sometimes um who are put into a position where um they uh when they are capable uh to be even um get um uh to promotions or um get uh what is due to them. Uh somebody would want um to to uh would want them to uh either um uh you know, get um you know, favors um or they would want um to 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 advance uh themselves as males um to those um uh young women. And which is something very, very painful that one has been experiencing and observing and and saying, we really need to to talk about those things and we need to create that environment where we can uh share um as women and be able to support uh one another um at all times because um we we are really, if we are stronger together and we can do it when we work together. Um uh just uh uh on looking on the uh economic outlook, uh we know that the economy looking is looking very bleak. Uh we know that um there's a number of um uh people who are going to be losing their jobs um as the economy um has shown. Uh we know as well that um for so long, a number of women um have been uh occupying um the informal sector of the economy. And those uh the informal sector of the economy is the one that has been hardest hit um during the lockdown and during um these risk adjustment uh adjusted um uh during the COVID nineteen um at times. And so um we would need to really see um how can we utilise um our circles um to support uh 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 each other, uh but also to use um the knowledge that we have um to reach out uh to many um of those women out there uh to be able um to support uh their families, to be able to support uh themselves, uh to be able to stand uh for themselves. Um I I I I I do not want to take uh too much time, but um to say that um uh we have seen as well how um uh uh now more than ever um the technology um has been used. Aleni, I know that uh we have been in the space talking about trying to get as many uh women as we can into the technology space. Uh but we've also seen now how uh you know, the behaviour of the consumers have changed. Um we've been looking and observing the economy that even though um the economy um is opening um every day, um the 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 behaviours of people uh in terms of uh consumptions, in terms of buying has totally changed from what what it was before um the lockdown and before the COVID, uh which really points um to um the fact that more and more people uh were prefer to buy online, more and more people uh pre- prefer to buy more um technology, uh you know, things uh prefer prefer also um to look at um, you know, how they can have businesses that have got to do with technology. Um as that's how you can reach out even internationally with your products um as opposed to just looking um locally. So there is a lot um really that we can do. Um and our main focus really um as the department will be um to be looking at how do we enhance the industrial development through the investment uh into the key areas uh or or the key sectors um such as in the manufacturing, in the tourism, in the logistics. Um we're also looking at what are those sectors that we believe that the government need to expand uh and also replace those jobs um that are going to be lost. Uh we're looking at um what are those industries where we need to enhance um our products uh and ensure that many people come in uh into um uh the 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 job um environment. Um so I'm sure um moving forward, um there's a lot um that we are going to be able to do uh working together uh in this network forum. Um just want to say thank you very much uh once more for inviting me. Um I have enjoyed uh very much um joining a a number of webinars, um a number of um, you know, as seminars um uh 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 online. And um it's really been um quite an empowering um uh uh sector. Um thank you to you, uh Aleni, because if there was not people like you, um those women uh who are in this uh sector um who inspire us um to get in there and not be afraid of the digital um space. Um I don't think many of us um like um who would have been inspired, uh my my own uh Tande, the Ellenson, um who always inspire me as well and many other women um that we work with, um uh who and who have inspired us um that we've worked with um i- in the space um of the technology, of course, and we and and our babes, um uh our 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 babes uh of technology, our our own very minister. Um and thank you very much uh once more to to the Chairperson uh of the Women's Network Forum of Vodacom for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honourable M E C. Um it was truly inspiring words. You gave us an all-rounder um talk on firstly, what it is that that I C T does um for business um and 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 various sectors such as tourism, which um you are accountable for. But also, as as we know, um women become um a little bit or display more E Q um than the other gender. Mostly, I'm generalising, it's not always the 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 space, but you gave us also that pep talk of um being inspirational even when you don't um realise that you are being inspirational in the in the sector. Um I must say, I'm also a mother of two and um in these COVID times, I've had to make tough decisions about what do I do with my primary school-going children? And thank you to technology, I was able to 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 do two things, to be able to keep them at home and they have continued learning. But also, when some of us mothers keep our children at home, we then open up the space in the physical space in the school so that the other grade sevens, which are my daughter's peers, can go to school and be able to practise social distancing easier. And those things we take for granted, it's uh, you know, she's right now in a classroom in another part of the house, um busy learning as if she would in a classroom. But it's the impact of technology that's allowed us to divide them so that the school can can have enough space to practise what is required in these times and we take it for granted. Technology um is truly the the enabler for many things, for social media, for um various things like email and and texts and WhatsApps um for connecting to the globe. As Honourable M E C said, um an organisation can now breach um the immediate environment of servicing their customers where they have a physical reach and and being able to trade with other target markets outside of your physical reach through e-commerce. Um and all this technology um and communication means um is enabled by various things that we as Vodacom provide. Um but at the same time, it is the centrepiece of various industries. And um why should we have a Women's Network Forum, not only in Vodacom but with women um across the country, across the province? Is because when we impart our knowledge of um how easy it is to use technology, but also how easy it is to enter this industry, it will then help us as as women be the centrepiece of the enablement of the entire ecosystem of our uh economy. Um so breaking the digital divide, when some of our county representatives on the call that are in the outlying rural areas are helping or gogo or people that would n- normally not use technology to, for example, put a WhatsApp group together to communicate um various things happening in the community or or various call-outs or even just passing information of what to do and not to do, especially in these times, is that first step to getting someone to to embracing technology and maybe one day being the next C I O Chief Digital Officer elsewhere. So please, ladies, do not take it for granted where we are today. And please impart what you do. Don't think, oh, um I am just, for example, an F S C. Um I cannot inspire someone. People look up to you. The fact that you are enabling the channel to distribute the SIM cards, the devices, the fibre to the home, the Wi-Fi um to various organisations and and homes um is something inspiring for the next person. So go out there and 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 network with other women and network internally to say, hey, um Precious, how did you become the Chair Lady of the Women Networks Forum? Um perhaps you want to be her successor. That's what networking is about. It's both the breadth and the depth of of our industry. So go ahead and do that. Now, why am I stressing on this point? Um we all know that um in general, in in the workforce, um women are underrepresented represented. But when we say technology is the future of shaping our economy, our way of living, our way of learning, um we really should um see it as as that um industry that is really going to be a pivotal point amongst others that were named by Honourable M E C for the growth of our country, the growth of society globally. And when you see stats that women only hold nineteen percent of tech-related jobs, which is some of us on this call, and you see that in leadership positions, less than a third of of leaders in the I C T environment are are female, um it shows you that there's a lot of work to do. So your work hasn't ended, it's only begun. We really, really need to stimulate these numbers to find an equilibrium. Because when you look at the stats um of the population and the representation of of females in the general population globally, the numbers are not this, it's 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 majority um female. So then what happens after so many decades of of empowerment that we are lagging in this industry? Um and then when we look at the grassroots level um the what's happening in the education system, women are underrepresented uh underrepresented in the STEM related um um education sectors, um where you find that um only um two to five women or two for every two women that are studying and successfully complete I C T and technology courses, there is five um males that have completed. And then when you look at that, you ask yourself, with the failure rate, and we know that not everybody who completes their studies actually gets a job in what they study, what will this, what will change the picture on the left? There's a lot of work to be done. So in the forum for Quazalunata, I would like to um steer us to say, every day, everything we're doing, let us really, really make an effort to close this gap. Um because you need a diverse um organisation to be able to be truly successful. And when we call ourselves a purpose-led organisation, let's give ourselves, as the K Z N Women Forum, a purpose to close this gap. Let's have have common dialogues wherever we are across the province to really, really inspire ladies out there and young girls out there to want to be in the sector. And you don't have to be an engineer to be where you are. I personally am not an engineer. I studied psychology and criminology. Technology, you're not born with it, you learn it. And step by step, you then self-empower yourself to then get to to where some of us are and where all of you are as well on the call. Um let's support each other and let's let's start changing the way we talk about technology. Let's talk about technology being cool and being simplistic and and being nothing to be afraid of. And when someone is sending a WhatsApp, tell them that they're using a very high-tech platform already, because it is to actually enable it. It needs hosting services, it needs connectivity, it needs algorithms, it needs network security to be able to actually send a hi, how are you in the morning on WhatsApp. So break it down to say, it's as simple as that, just like you send that hello or that emoji. In the backend, you've touched so many spheres of I C T, it's not even funny, it's mind-blowing. And then it starts looking practical and easy to access. Um I liked this and I will share it with all the ladies and everybody who's joined um on the call. It was um um dubbed by our Southern Africa CEO of P W C. And it's, I'll read it out, it says, like, so many other industries of our economy, tech desperately needs more women to play a leading role in taking the industry forward. Those companies that have prioritised gender diversity generally outperform their peers and produce better results. And I want to stop there to say, it is not in having the same type of person with the same look, the same likes, the same hobbies that makes an organisation, be it small, large, private, public, um successful. It is the diversity, because when you have different mindsets and different ideas, it's then where you then produce great results. So I'd like to implore everybody on this call to say, look at yourself in the mirror and see yourself as that one person that could change those stats. It's not up to me, it's not up to um our Chair Lady Precious, it's not up to um government. It is up to every single one to pull someone along on their journey. And when you are then looking to the next level that you want to progress to, because it starts with you, think of who you're then going to bring along to then step into your shoes as you move up in your journey. Um and with that, you need to shine your light. You need to be grateful and proud of what you've achieved in life. And then you need to say, um how do I spread that knowledge? How do I share that experience? And how do I then um inspire someone else? Um when Honourable M E C was talking about gender-based violence, I've shared my story with many ladies. I too was in a very horrific um abusive relationship in the past. And it takes a lot in you to And it takes a lot in you to step out of it and to break free of it. But once you've done and you've accomplished your personal success story, it's not done. The journey only starts. You then, because of what you've gone through, are enabled to help the next person and pull them along, and that's another thing. And you are then insightful when we want to deploy solutions through ICT to combat things like gender-based violence and other social ills. You know what the technology needs to do and look out for and monitor and feedback and report on that will enable an impactful change in that part of societal ills that you are trying to combat. So even your personal journey, share it and apply it when you are applying your solutions that you're applying out there. When you are simply inspiring someone to take WhatsApp, tell them that one day this could change someone's life, because should you witness someone who's being abused or you see something going wrong in society, this could enable you to call out for help so that it can be addressed. So don't take things lightly that you go through. Every step in your journey of life is meant for you to be able to give back or to be able to overcome something else in future. And with that, in closing, I don't want to take lots of your time, so we can go to Q and A. I'd like to say, wherever you are, whatever you do, at every given moment, leave a legacy. When you are joining on this call, what are you going to do after that with the information that you gathered today to be able to make a positive impact on someone else's life? When you are doing what you do today, do it so well that when you have moved along and someone else comes, they say, eh, but you're not doing it the same way as this person used to. I always make it a personal aspiration of myself with everything that I do to put a stamp on it, that E stamp on it, that Lenny has been here. So that even if I go, when the second, third, fourth person is now filling that position, my legacy is still impacted there, the way that I shape policy or the way that I shape the way things are done or not done, my team can tell you that's on the call. There's a way I do things that's within policy, yes, within guidelines, but that leaves a legacy that there was an Lenny here who came from this walk of life, who shaped us positively in this way. And yes, I'm not perfect, you make mistakes, but how you react and recover from your mistakes and learn from them is also a thing to make an impact with people around you. And then you move on, and other people also follow in your footsteps formidably. So with that, I'd like to say thank you to everyone, and I am going to leave it off here and open up for questions. Please raise your hand on teams, or otherwise, please feel free to use the text comments bar on the side to ask any questions of us, and we'll answer them. Any questions? Any comments?
Hi, Lenny. It's Kollega here. Thank you for that presentation, even though I joined late to join the COVID months. Appreciate your time that you're giving to us. But from my side, I want to find out from you, how you deal with power and dominance in the workplace, how you deal with the environment that comes with the patriarchal society that we live in, because it comes in from different angles, but how do you deal with that?
Thank you, Kollega, for opening up the questions and for a very relevant question, especially when you find yourself in an industry where maybe you are a minority. So I think mainly the first part, Kollega, of what I adopt is, I normally always look at it from a personal perspective. So I usually ask my team, and I think they've heard it so many times, they know what I'm going to say, if someone had to walk up to you and slap you in the face, what would your reaction be? Many people would say, I'd hit them back. Others would say, I'd never talk to them again. I'd report them. Yes, there's various steps to follow. But for me personally, I always implore people, look at the person and ask yourself, what made that person do what they did to me? So when you feel that someone is unfairly suppressing you, whether it's in the corporate environment or in a personal environment, ask yourself, what has made this person to do this? And I'm not saying then feel sorry for them and throw a pity party, but it helps you adapt and strategise how you're going to react and act and counter that situation. Because various things may happen, someone might feel almost threatened, someone might be doing it unaware of the impact they have, because when you walk into a room and you say good morning, your intention may be that you want to say good morning to the people in the room and make them feel inspired and open up dialogue and conversation. Meantime, something in your tone lands on Lenny that reminds her of the good morning she used to have by someone else who didn't make them feel that great. And then the reaction of Lenny is not what you expected of her to react. So you need to really sit down and almost have a mini-strategy to say, okay, where is this dominance or suppression coming from? Why do you think this is happening? What is this person trying to achieve? And how do I counter it? And collaborate when you feel like it's too much for you to counter. Call some sisters in the room or in the organisation, those that you trust that can be confidential, and brainstorm it, and you'll find that when you address the matter and you counter it in a way that the person either becomes aware of the impact they're having on you or in the opposite way of what they were expecting. Maybe they were expecting you to go cower in a corner and leave them alone for them to do what they want to do without your interference, it will help. But it's always important, says Kollega, to look at the person, the intention, and what caused the action or the reaction you're getting out of it. Without that, you're going to start fighting and having an impact or a conversation that you didn't really want to land up in. Does that answer your question?
It does answer my question, because I think as women, we affect it as well with what goes on in our homes and all of that we bring into work. So it has different dynamics for us as we're going through the femicide state in the country. So also, it will come to a point of how then do we support each other in the workplace? Yeah.
A hundred percent. We've got a comment from Zamor saying, "Thank you, Lenny, for this session. You sometimes think you are the only one that is going through a challenge as a woman. However, sharing and talking to others, you then get the sense of comfort that you are not alone. An empowering session. Thank you. A hundred percent, Zamor, and I'm happy that it made an impact." Tandega has raised her hand.
Thank you, Lenny, for this wonderful opportunity and what you're bringing in terms of the women in ICT is really applaudable. It is a great initiative, and the Moses Scottana Institute would like to be part of you when you engage in such. But I do feel that somehow our women in rural areas need some kind of intervention as well. And I'm just asking Vodacom perhaps to think about how we can maybe just do something of the similar nature, but in rural areas, because you find that often they don't have access to technologies that we are talking about, that we are currently using, and somehow they are left out in the open. How do we take this to the women in rural areas? So it's just a comment that when you are sitting afterwards, you think about, and then we can engage on that together with, I see Ms Pukuma is also here from Etia, we can perhaps assist Vodacom in doing the same in rural areas. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and a hundred percent, I'm going to speak to my K Z N Exco. Ladies, they know who they are, we'll announce them next week, we must align with Precious. But what I'm saying to you in response is a hundred percent, we will endeavour to find a way to really reach them, even if it's in these times in remote connection on a platform. Our Aspamela to Fast Track initiative will have only small special programmes where we enable people to connect to a platform for free, and we engage and we inspire them as entrepreneurs, as possible employees of the ICT industry, and also as maybe current ladies in a big or small way in ICT in the rural areas, and how we then join hands with them and grow this industry. So a hundred percent, we'll take that up as an action point, and it would be quite exciting. Personally, and I'm sure for many ladies on the call, because Vodacom is very pro-community development. When we say we're purpose-led, we live and breathe purpose-led initiatives. So we'll take you up on that. Zamor, you've raised your hand.
Lenny, for me, I think I just, I really appreciated, you know, the whole session this morning. It really gave me a sense of comfort, especially after, you know, watching news, and, you know, all we did was sleep in fear, you know, especially being a mother of two girls. So it just really gave me a form of comfort, and, you know, to know that women can actually come together and, you know, and be strong. And yeah, and also, I'd also just like to commend you. I mean, I remember just joining the team. You know, I was very anxious about it, I won't even lie. And when I got there, only to find out that I have three men in my team, as you know, with P M O. And, you know, obviously, as a woman, the first thing, or for me, the first instinct was to try to match up to them, you know, try to be like them. And I remember the first session I had with you, it was a Friday, and you engaged the whole team. And, you know, after that, I mean, for you, it probably was just a normal, you know, procedural thing on a Friday, but it left me so inspired to say, you know what? It's okay to be a woman, you know, it's okay to be soft, and, you know, use that to your advantage. So, yeah, I just really like to commend you, and I think I'm really, not even, I don't even think, I know I'm just like less anxious about being in the team, and I just really feel so inspired. And yeah, so this whole session really left me so curious, because I've honestly not seen anything like this before. So if you can just share a link or website where we can visit and see how, you know, we can contribute even in the smallest way. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Zamor. Thank you. I'm going to read some comments. Ekta, thank you for this, Lenny, and for always having our backs. Oh, you know, Ekta, I've got all the ladies' backs in the region. I wish I could do more, but I always strive to a hundred percent. And this way, thank you, Lenny, we sometimes forget that, we forget who we are and just get on with things because of the nature of the business. Thank you for the empowerment. Thank you for the wise words from the Honourable M E C. A hundred percent. You really sometimes forget what you are busy with is formidable for other people. It's mind-blowing. It's like watching people go to Mars. So a hundred percent, spot on. And from Pumesa, thank you, Lenny, this was insightful and very motivating. Really appreciate the session. Christine, you've raised your hand.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Lenny. I'll just thank everybody. Thank you, this has been amazing. I'm, obviously because you are at the highest level now, you know, as a mother and somebody that works for Vodacom, you can't be in a struggle. When you're a girl mother and you have time at home, you're actually not doing any time at work. If you're working, then you're not spending any time with your child. There's always a constant struggle. I just like to know how you balance it. Always it, you know, sometimes you work with people that don't have these responsibilities, go home to cook and that and that. How do you balance it both in your mind and your job? These two, these two worlds basically. How do you come to a place where you think, it's enough for me to be a work now, it's enough for me now, child, spend this time at home? How do you balance all of that in your mind and you feel you're in charge all the time basically?
Okay, it was fuzzy, but I got it. Precious, are you still on the line? Precious, are you on? Where's our Chair Lady? Has she left? Okay, I wanted to start off with Precious answering. Basically, your question is, how do you balance being a mom, having a home life, and the pressures of work? And sometimes you have colleagues that don't have the same amount of responsibilities at home and do, and you're expected to deliver at the same pace or with the same effort. So I'd like to say, firstly, Christine, it's, for me personally, I'm going to answer from an eye perspective, it's about being present. So with everything that I do, I give it my all. Some of you have noticed, whether we're in a social event or wherever we are, I completely immerse myself in that moment. So I work hard, I play hard, I mother hard, I have fun hard. I know it sounds funny the way I'm saying it, but you cannot be half here and half there. So when I commit to my children, for example, that at six o'clock, I'm sitting down with them and I'm having dinner, I am present. You can phone me, unless you WhatsApp me with a red alert to say a rodent is burning, I am present. And then thereafter, I'll attend to something. And it doesn't all work where there's twenty-four hours in a day, so you can put eight hours to sleep, another eight for work, and then you dissect the rest for kids and whatever, because life is fluid. But I always communicate, number one, and I found that helped. So I felt at some point in my career, very bad, I used to travel a lot, that I hardly see my children, but I used to communicate and share experience with them. And when my daughter, at a much younger age than she is now, she's thirteen, turned around and said, when I'm big, I want to be just like you, mom. I want to be a businesswoman and I want to be a mom, because you help people out there and then you also are there for us. It gave me that sense of comfort and took away some of the guilt, because it was really taxing on me, having this in the back of my mind, that even though when I say this weekend is for them, we go all out and we're with them, it's not every day that I'm there. And I'd had to find a support structure, and it was predominantly a female support structure, because I couldn't do everything. So if I knew that I'm going to have a season of travelling a lot, I had ladies that would pick up and drop off for me, and that we shared routine with so that they knew what my routine was, and I'd reciprocate the favour. If maybe someone wanted a Saturday to go to the spa and I'd take the kids. But I made sure that I've got a support structure, but mostly is whether it's with your partner, whether it's with your kids, whether it's at work, give it your all and make that impactful impact then and be fully present. Don't half-heartedly do it. And when you're giving your time self-off to switch off and relax, like I took two days off earlier this week, take the time off, because your body needs that time to reboot as well. And that's the only advice I can give. I don't know if Precious is back on, but that's how I manage it and balance it, Christine. But I'll make sure that I do attend to all spheres of my personal wellbeing and also my career.
Amazing. Thank you.
I'm checking, someone else raised their hand?
Hi, Lenny.
Hello.
Litiya raised my hand. Firstly, I just want to say, welcome, K Z N. We look forward to working and obviously collaborating with you guys. I'm part of the Women's Network Forum. It's been, the conversation thus far has been very inspiring, motivational, and I must truly say, I'm humbled thus far by everything that has been said. I just want to find out from you, look, in the corporate world, obviously, there's a lot of, you know, you deal with a lot of situations where sometimes you're under pressure, you, there's a lot of stress, and then you need to go home, then you've got, obviously, your second job now, which is your kids, your family. What mechanisms do you use in order to cope, especially with, you know, with a corporate world? What do you have in place for yourself that helps you just to stay motivated, you know, to be on top of your job? You know, maybe it's something that we can maybe learn from and maybe take away from the session as well.
Thank you, Celeste, for that question, and Onati, I'll then come to you after I answer it. So, Celeste, I firstly love what I do. I love I firstly love what I do. I love where I am and I love what I do. I. I don't think I'd be able to be as impactful and exert as many hours into my career if I did not love what I do. Um and if you find yourself in a space where you're not quite sure about your passion for what you're doing. Then put a goal up of where you want to get to and concentrate on that. I normally tell um people in general who I I sometimes used to coach and mentor. That if you do not love and are passionate about what you do, have a plan to get where you're going to really love what you do and put that up there. And then make a social contract with yourself to say, in order for me to get there. I need to do the best that I can here and have the and leave the best legacy ever because it's a stepping stone to there. So it's one of two things, either loving what you do and then or otherwise having that goal in mind about what where you are. Is going to do for you to get to where you want to be. Once you once you're done with that, Celeste, I think there's nothing that can shake you. Um Lynn, who's on the call, um assists me, she knows my battles. And I have proper battles on a day to day, weekly, monthly, quarterly basis. But none of them, there is nothing that can shake what I feel about what I'm doing, about the impact I'm having on society, not only my clients. But also the the people that are looking up to me around me. Um I don't know if Honorable M E C is on the call, but for for Honorable M E C to know me by name, guys, you you don't understand. Um for young girls at school to tell my kids that, oh, we saw your mom and she was doing this with the Women's Forum or. We saw your your your, my parents saw your mom last night speaking to business leaders. It's it's not, it's not an ego thing. It's about I am able to make an impact on someone that will inspire them to take the next step up. So so Celeste, I think that's where it starts. And then the rest, I I don't have the answer because there's various hurdles, whirlwinds. Um and 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 every other um um speed bump that will come along the way. But if you're really truly inspired and passionate about what you do. And if you really understand the impact you have on others as you're going through a day to day journey, like um Andiswa and some of the ladies have said. You you won't feel that impact like it would be when you hate what you're doing. So start there with with the love of what you're doing. Onati?
Oh, hi, Eleni, guys. Um I just wanna say thank you for bringing us um to the region. There's things we won't see them in the at office and most of them, they hardly come to the region. So thank you very much for that. And um I'm also thinking, I mean, I see you in the office um like all the time, you know, with your head up high, you know. Um I guess this question is already being asked, but I'm thinking you're a black, um you know, young woman and. You speak so confidently, you know, when you're speaking and you're amongst these men. And I guess most of the time you have to work uh ten times harder to prove yourself. And even though when you work, sometimes you'll hear uh people praising men like all the time. How do you deal with all that? Doesn't that bring you down? Because like I'm saying, you work ten times. I mean, you've got the family and. The responsibilities as well, they're totally different when it comes to the other um to the other end. So how do you deal with all that pressure? And coming to the articulating part, where did you learn like to speak so fluently and, you know, confident? You know, and when you're addressing people, how do you know what to say um at what point? Sorry, I'm being so personal.
It's okay. I'm glad you're making it personal because that's 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 what we're here for, right? Is to be real with each other. So firstly, I wanna turn it around a bit. Sometimes I ask myself, um how do the men deal with me? Okay, I'm just. I'm just me. I'm Eleni and yes, I'm a female, but it's just how I'm made. So I'm I'm super emotional and I'm not only saying. Um the sad part, yes, I cry a lot. My team knows. If we close a big deal, I cry. If I'm happy, I cry. If I'm sad, I'm crying. If I'm angry, I cry. So imagine in the boardroom and you're talking, you're passionate, and then the tears start rolling down. And you know, some of the guys, especially engineers. Not so much is she's okay, but some are like, okay, now what do we do with emotion? I'm just me, right? Um. I'm just me. I bring myself to the party because I believe I'm here for a reason. And if I don't give myself and not being authentic, then. It's not worth um doing what I'm doing. But then, secondly, how do I deal with it? Um. I I'm not doing what I'm doing now with everything that I've achieved um in life only for myself and to get a paycheck on the twenty fifth. I am doing what I'm doing so that the next um executive, whether it's in Vodacom or any other organization, that's a black woman or a woman or a. Whatever woman um or anyone who's maybe a bit different to the norm of society. Has got a fair chance because they can look back and say, hmm, who's the list of other people we've had? Okay, we've had Eleni. How how was she? And people must be able to say brilliant. And then they can have the trust in the next person as well. And and that's what makes me not feel the extra hard work is if I do everyone on this call and everybody out there, even in the rural areas, township areas, a disservice by being mediocre. Then I'm doing them a disservice for maybe getting the next chance of of the next breakthrough. And and I do it intently. So whatever I do, I always ask myself, what impact is it not only gonna have on me and my personal. Reputation or my personal growth, but what is it going to do for the next person? And when I see another woman fail in any position, it breaks my heart. It it really does because. You don't know how stereotypes are formed in different people's mindsets. So I'd rather see more women succeed and excel because. It then changes the mindset to say, hey, you know what, in actual fact, if so many women are succeeding and and blowing the the. The charts in terms of of outputs, maybe we should have more of them, if you know what I mean, in certain positions and in certain industries. And that's what makes me um work harder. In terms of articulation, I I don't know how to answer that. So I. Funny enough, um grew up an introvert. I'd be the one in class who wouldn't put her hand up, even though I know the answer. And through the journey of life, um I think I I took up um debating. Um and public speaking to to gain the confidence, but I'd still shake like a paper in the wind. Um and something in my mind just clicked that um in order to get my story first, I need to. I need to brush up. And I think the rest then was just a gift from above. And um. And when I speak confidently, sometimes I'm having ten conversations in my head about, you know, what I'm saying wrong. But most importantly is to answer partly um the similar way to what Colica said. Is I always try and read a crowd or the audience, which makes these kind of sessions very difficult because I can see nobody. And I always address anything that I say to try and adapt to the recipient of my message. Um and maybe that's what you can take away, is a hello or a sentence to one person cannot be the same to the next person because. You need to decide what message you're trying to take across, what are you trying to get out of this conversation or or speech that you're giving or talk. And also, what's the body language of the person that you are addressing? Um you know, if you see them slumping and falling um um asleep, then you you've like way past them. You need to like clap your hands and wake them up and change your tone. So I'm all about making the impact on the next person rather than trying to get my message across my way. I hope that helps. Um I've got um Lou, Lo Swazi saying, thank you, Eleni, for the invitation and for sharing your story. And of course, to my boss, she always delivers crisp messages. She's at war with g- um gender based violence with her being. It's humbling having survived abuse at the hands of someone who puts up his collar into a boardroom and chairs. Well respected meetings. It leaves you with a huge doubt on whether professional men will ever rally around women. In the country to find the scourge of femicide. What has been? What has been your observation or conversations with your fellow executives in boardrooms? Okay, fortunately, I'm surrounded by um people in the organization that are really purpose led. So just yesterday, I was speaking to Christine and our male leader is passionate about what do we do about addressing gender based violence and femicide in our own way as Vodacom. When we were launching and building um the K Z N Social Development Call Center to address um. Calls for social for for gender based violence, um he he allowed me to clear my entire diary. To make sure that that project is delivered with precision, with speed and with good quality. Um we're now looking at how do we enhance in K Z N what's been done at national to address um gender based violence in the ways that we that we can. So. Um I I personally have an aspiration on a personal note to combat um femicide and gender based violence because I've been there. Um I've been in situations where I didn't think I was gonna make the next minute as I was being battered. So. I personally would love to do anything in my power or within my reach to address it. But I'm blessed to have leadership from our C E O downwards that are passionate as well about it. And as an organization, wherever we can, we are behind clearing the scourge in society. Um and abuse, guys, is not only physical. There's emotional abuse, economic abuse, um there's psychological abuse. Um you know, people who take their 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 grandparents' money that is given to them by government to survive and childhood on hair hairstyles, whatever it may be. Um someone telling you you're dumb um as a child, some people don't understand the impact psychologically that has on a grown person later in life. If you accept it and you don't let it bounce off you. So there's various um forms of 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 abuse in society. And in my spare time, I spend hours trying to speak to women who are either going through um abuse or. Or um coaching them on how to identify signs of abuse and what to do when they see that someone might be abused. Um and we're now going to um dedicate some of these forum times to address that, not only to say, are you a victim, but. Do you perhaps know the signs that when you come across someone who might be a victim, what you need to do? Um so we we really are driving that. And then, as I said, people in boardrooms who want to be um police, um think of what the end game is and just strategize around it and counter it. Um. And remember, your your reaction to something is um is a choice. So your reaction to this call is a choice of what you take away from it. If someone um. Um says something offensive, it's your personal choice to be deeply offended or to let it bounce off and think what would make that person do that. Or maybe they're ignorant, whatever it may be. And move on and correct um with an encouraging manner and move on. So always, guys, I think a- as ladies in the organization, try. And really, really take that um personal choice back, empower yourself to react in the manner that is more healthy. And and will bring happiness to you rather than the opposite, and you'll go far. Um I want to wrap up. I don't know if my chair lady is back. Um I don't wanna take more of your time. I want to be timise with these sessions. So I'd like to say thank you very much um to everybody for joining. Are you here?
Hi, hi, Eleni. Sorry, I'm back. I was just to step by uh another call. Sorry.
Oh, no problem. Um so so I'd I'd like to just pave the way forward. So I am going to personally commit. Um that we are going to engage at least monthly. Um and I've kind of preset dates with Lynn, but we'll agree on them and we'll preset them so that you can work around them and and book your sessions around them. And between now and the next session, we're going to engage the national um exco team of Women Network Forum and align with the K Z N team. And we're then going to um put together programs for the for the for the rest of the year. And then we'll then follow up in the next coming years. I'd like to leave a legacy where women um connect. It won't always be a one way stream. I wanna have fun. So it's not only about the doom and gloom or inspiring and feeling motivated that I'm not alone in my corners, or also about. Ladies, how do we have fun, especially in times of COVID? I'm sure you've explored all corners of of your home. Now, what do we do to engage and have fun as women? What are we about? Um how are we going to empower, as we've now um gotten a challenge? Other women out there, not only in the city, but out there in the rural areas, township areas, um in our organization. How do we share stories that are inspirational? Um the Vodacom business team will tell you. Um when you start sharing, you learn so much about your colleagues that you didn't know. As some uh of you ladies on the call have been saying, you've seen me walking in the corridors. Now you 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 have a different perspective. Um or you have a different form of inspiration that we're gonna come together as women. So there's going to be fun aspects, inspirational aspects, information sharing. And career planning, guys, what is your next step and how do you get there? Um there's going to be um collaboration with the national team when they're doing sessions like the leaning sessions, what's coming next and what we're going to do. Moreover, I'd like us to also be inclusive. So some sessions, we won't just be exclusive ladies and some we will, where maybe. Bring in someone to talk to us about um helping yourself as a woman, you know, um. Personal grooming image, online image, we're going to go through a journey together and I'm really excited about it. So thank you for your time. An hour and a half is not um a little bit of time in in this day and age, especially when we're online. And before I close off, is there any closing remarks from you, um Precious?
Wow, thank you so much, Eleni. I am really excited. You know, I am so uh fulfilled. I think for me, uh it 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 everything that we've planned as the ladies uh. We were sitting in Midrand way, we were talking about inclusiveness and making sure that everyone is part of this forum. Uh I think for for the lady, I think it was Colica when she was saying that all these things, they see them happening uh in Midrand. So. Um um I just want to say to you, Colica, these are exciting times. I think the technology is also allowing us now to connect. As the women in Vodacom and we have these sessions. So there's no excuse, no, there's no venue and all that. We will have these virtual. Sessions and we will all be inclusive and be part of the session. There's another one, as I said, ladies, that is coming uh in August. So it's not only going to be just the women in Vodacom. We're going to be collaborating with women from other areas. But one thing that I just want to say to you, Eleni, and the team, thank you so much. Uh for me, this is an honor to be part of this exciting time where women in Vodacom are joining uh hands. And I think we need to really work hard as females to ensure that we change the numbers. We need to work together to ensure that um we close the gap. And uh just on a closing, I think when you said we need to shine and uh we 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 really need now to raise our 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 flag as women. Uh we know that we are the pillars uh of our houses, you know, we have the 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 power. So it's high time that we work together, we empower each other, we support each other where we can. I think the lean encircled. Uh uh really for that, that we sit together, we we share our experience, we empower each other, ladies, you know, so. If we if you have questions to say, Eleni, if I I I'm struggling, I feel like I'm stuck in my career, what do I need to do? I mean. We have leaders like you, Eleni, in the executive level. You can uh start and lifting each other. So I'm really excited. This is what Women Network Forum is all about. So K Z N, well done. And thank you so much. I think you've done a lot of groundwork on your side, Eleni, and I'm really excited. I think this journey with uh with K Z N is just gonna be an easy one. Now we need to get Western Cape, we need to get the central region to be on board. I can't wait to the day all the regions are coming together. Then we can push uh this agenda uh for for the Women Network Forum. Thank you so much, Eleni. I'm excited.
Thank you. And we've got five minutes to grab a quick cup of coffee. Christine, that balance. Thank you so much, ladies. Have a fabulous day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you very much, Eleni. No, thank you very much again for your time and thank you to uh Precious um as well. And thank you to all the ladies um uh once more. And um. Um just to say from my side as well that we must just always remember that um. As women and and you were saying this, um Eleni, that um. As women, um I I I I we we are very strong. Um and sometimes the way we are so strong. Um that um we even um are afraid um of um ourselves, um the way we are so strong. And we we sometimes don't even want to believe um uh to ourselves. Uh but also, I I I I want to say as a strong woman, um I I've dealt with my uh own. You know, I've cried myself to sleep. Um I've picked myself up. Um you know, I've wiped my tears, you know. I've had moments where you go out of that boardroom, you go to the bathroom and you go and cry and you come back. Um and you dust yourself and you stand up. Um so 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 for those women who are saying, how do you deal with it? Um you do deal with it. And I'm glad you did raise the issue of um emotional and psychological, um you know, abuse. abuse, um, that women do really, um, go through because those are, are very serious. Because those, you don't, you don't see the physical scars and they remain with you. And that's why it's good, um, to cry. It's good sometimes to go and scream, uh, scream it out and, and, and let it out and breathe and, and, and come back. Um, but release it, um, if you have to relieve, uh, relieve it, uh, release it and love yourself, um, ladies. And, and, and open your heart and speak your truth and, 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 you know, and trust your universe as well and, and learn to, 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 um, to expand, uh, your awareness. And I'm glad that, um, you know, you have an organization like, um, Vodacom that values, uh, women. Honestly, you are, uh, 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 one of the few organizations that, um, and you must retain, uh, this innocence and follow your own way, expand, uh, your awareness, make your own decision and enforce those boundaries. And, um, walk, uh, with faith, even when you can't see, uh, as women. And everything of the best, um, to all of you. Thank you very much once more.
Honorable M E C, I was typing for you to say, we are so honored that even with the jam-packed schedule that you had, you stayed with us right till the end. I, I thought you had dropped off. We are so literally honored and thank you for sharing. Um, thank you so much, ma'am. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, M E C. Thank you, Eleni.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, ladies. Bye.
Bye.